Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 8th, 2024 Regular Meeting for the City of Burbank Planning Board. It is approximately 6:01 and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Before we begin the meeting tonight, there will be one general period of public comment during oral communications. Persons speaking during general public comment period may provide the Planning Commission with oral communication on any matter concerning city business, the public comment in person or by telephone during the general public hearing, public comment periods. If you would like to participate in public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. We will start with an invocation by, given by Board Member Monaco and I will lead us in the flag salute. If you could please rise. Please join me in saluting our flag. Madam Clerk, can we get the roll call, please?
Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Chair Wick.
Present.
Commissioner Monaco.
Present.
And Commissioner Markutumian.
Present.
And do we have any announcements from staff?
No announcements.
There are two public hearings on the agenda tonight. We will start with item number one. Now is the time and place for the public hearing for project number 23-000301, a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of adult daycare facility located at 607 South Glen Oaks Boulevard. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written, oral, with any person about this project?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
There are written communications and those have been provided to the commission before the meeting.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Hello, good evening. May I please have the presentation on the screen? Thank you. Good evening, Chair Rosati and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Hernick, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. This evening, I'm presenting an application requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the property at 607...
We're just having a little trouble hearing. Can you just move closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry about that. This evening, I'm presenting an application requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the property at 607 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, which is an existing commercial building. The representative of the applicant, Mr. Armitz Shanazarian, is here tonight and will be available to respond to any questions the Planning Commission may have after this presentation. The business owner and applicant, Mr. Hovik Abramian, is also in attendance tonight. The project site is located at the northeast corner of East Cedar Avenue and South Glen Oaks Boulevard, near the city's eastern boundary with the city of Glendale. The project site, shown here outlined in red, is a single 1.2-acre parcel and is currently improved with two commercial buildings, 601 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, a four-story building on the western portion of the site, and 607 South Glen Oaks Boulevard on the eastern portion of the site and shown here highlighted in yellow. It is a single-story structure measuring 8,600 square feet with a dedicated parking lot and is where the proposed adult daycare facility would operate. The project site is split-zoned C3 (general commercial business) and R4 (high-density residential) with the commercial building of the proposed adult daycare located entirely within the area's zone commercial. Therefore, only C3 development standards apply. The general plan designation for the project site is corridor commercial, which is a land-use designation intended to provide neighborhood-serving uses. Adjacent to the project site are commercial buildings to the north, east, and west along Glen Oaks Boulevard and multifamily residential to the north and south of the commercial corridor with high-density residential uses immediately to the south of the project site. Shown here are recent photos of the project site as seen from Glen Oaks Boulevard looking west and Cedar Avenue also looking westward. The applicant is requesting Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an adult daycare facility at an existing commercial structure. The Burbank Municipal Code Use Table does not identify this as a permitted use within the city. However, Planning Policy 502-1 does allow adult daycare uses in the C3 zones with Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit. The facility would be located within the existing 8,600-square-foot commercial building and would utilize the existing dedicated 33-space-covered parking area. The adult daycare facility would provide services for adults, including socialization and exercise, activities, meals, and health and wellness checks. These services do not include medical procedures or any addiction treatment services. The project applicant is proposing minor alterations to the existing parking area, including partial restriping to create two accessible parking spaces and two van-loading areas. Exterior improvements to the tenant space are not proposed as part of this application. However, minor interior improvements are currently under review by the Building and Safety Division through the Plan Check process, which include new restroom facilities and reorganization of office space. The adult daycare facility would provide services to program participants, who are largely elderly individuals, and would include assembly space for programming, socialization, and recreational opportunities. In addition, program participants would be able to consult and obtain treatment from nurses, physical therapists, psychologists, and social workers, and dietitians who periodically practice on-site, and breakfast and lunch would be served to program participants. The number of program participants would be capped at 100, as noted in the conditions of approval, and the facility would operate with a total of 12 staff members on-site at any given time, including part-time, full-time, and contracted nurses and therapists. The proposed hours for administrative duties, cleaning, and other non-program activities would be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which are similar to hours of other professional office building use, while the program hours, when the program participants would be on-site, would be limited to between 7:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. The applicant is proposing to have three to four vans that would be used to transport the majority of the program participants. As conditioned, the facility would be required to transport at least 75% of the program participants, which would include morning pickup from residences and drop-off at the facility between 7:30 and 9:00 a.m. and transportation of participants back to their residences with pickup from the facility between 1:30 and 3:00 p.m. The remaining 25% of program participants would be transported via metro or other public transportation services, family or caretaker transport, or rideshare services. No program participants would utilize their own transportation. All drop-up and pickup activities would occur in identified loading areas within the existing dedicated parking lot adjacent to the tenant space. This is the existing site plan. Again, the property is improved with an existing commercial building and a covered parking area. The parking lot entrance and exit are located along Cedar Avenue. The proposed van-loading area is also shown on the site plan. While the Burbank Municipal Code does not specify a parking rate for adult daycare uses, as permitted by the BMC, the Planning Commission previously established a parking requirement for this use, and the dedicated parking area on-site has 33 parking spaces, which exceeds the 26 spaces that would be required for the proposed allocation of space for various uses within the building. This is the proposed floor plan of the tenant space. The existing building is outlined in red, all of which would be occupied by the applicant. The areas highlighted in blue would be the activity areas where most of the program participants would spend their time. The green areas would be treatment offices where various health and wellness staff would provide treatment, including nurses, physical therapists, dietitians, and social workers. Administrative uses would occur in the orange areas. Restrooms are highlighted in red and storage areas are shown in purple. There are three entries for this tenant space, one from Cedar Avenue, shown to the left, and three, and two from within the parking area, shown at the top of the slide. Consistent with previous adult daycare facility applications before the commission, staff incorporated several conditions of approval into the resolution that place limitations on the proposed adult daycare facility operations in order to mitigate potential negative impacts to the surrounding uses, and are detailed in full in the resolution. Some of the key conditions include the following: A maximum of 100 program participants will be on-site at any given time. Hours of operation would be between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. for administrative duties and cleaning, and program hours would be limited to 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. A minimum of 75% of program participants must travel by shuttle van service provided by the business. Additionally, there are requirements for drop-off and pickup of program participants, including: All program participants must be transported to and from the facility through the facility-owned and operated van service, metro-access vehicles, or other public transit, family or caretaker transport, or rideshare services. No program participants will be allowed to park on-site. There shall be four clearly marked spaces for facility vans to load and unload program participants, including the two van-loading spaces. The facility shall clearly identify 10 parking spaces immediately adjacent to the facility's entrance to be used for pickup and drop-off of program participants, who will be using transportation other than the facility vans, and no staff members may park in these spaces during the client drop-off and pickup hours. Additionally, all employees, agents, and contractors shall park on-site using the facility parking area and shall not utilize street parking. Furthermore, the project includes a total of 12 staff members working on-site at any given time, including employees and contracted staff. The facility shall not permit smoking or noise nuisances. These restrictions are codified in the Burbank Municipal Code. Any request to amend this conditional use permit will require a two-year waiting period, which would begin when business operations of the adult daycare facility commence. And, a trip generation analysis may be required if there are future amendments to the CUP to verify the overall net new trips being generated by the facility to ensure it is not exceeding the maximum identified thresholds. Based on staff's assessment, this project qualifies for a categorical exemption of SEQA under Section 15301 involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use, and there are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of this exemption. As part of staff's review of a conditional use permit, the project was reviewed for consistency with the Burbank 2035 General Plan, the applicable zoning regulations, and the required conditional use permit findings per BMC Section 10-1-1936, as detailed in the staff report and attached resolution. And the conditions of approval ensure the project's compatibility with surrounding land uses. As outlined in staff's report, it is staff's assessment that with the associated conditions of approval, the project complies with all applicable requirements. Additionally, public comment was generally supportive of this project and was provided to the commission ahead of this presentation. Staff finds that the project is exempt from SEQA, the project is consistent with the general plan, and the project satisfies the required findings for a conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving project number 23-0003001, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for any questions the commission may have.
Thank you for your presentation. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, board members. My name is Armitz Shanazarian. I'm representing PBC Group. We're the architects on the project. I'm here basically to answer any questions that you have regarding this project.
We don't have any questions at the moment, but this gives you an opportunity to present. If you have a presentation for your project, if not, then we can just start public comment and move to questions.
We can start public comment. Basically, Sarah went over it and we agree with the conditions imposed on that.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. We will now open up the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you wish to speak, for members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. Please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this item? Thank you. Matt Kay.
Good evening. I'm actually here for item number two, but I noticed some things I had some quick questions about. It was interesting, as someone who's here for item number two, to see staff advocate, advocate, you know, be such an advocate for something that's off of the normal menu. And I'm wondering how that, how that works, how you get staff to essentially be an advocate and create an amazing presentation for something that's not normally permitted and, you know, advocate for that to happening in that zoning area. Also, what did that, what did that cost? And the blueprint, that amazing blueprint of what they intend to do? Who generates that? And as, as owner of a business who's required to submit a blueprint of my business to the state, I was really impressed that, that staff stepped up and handled that on behalf of that business. I'm wondering how that all works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone on the phone?
No callers on the phone.
There being no further public comment item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Did staff want to address that one comment?
Yeah. So, adult daycare facilities are permitted in the C3 zones with approval of a conditional use permit. So while it is not identified as a use in the Burbank Municipal Code Use Table, it has been, it has been established through a city planner, previous city planner CUP approvals, that this, that this is a use that can go through a normal CUP process. And that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Chair, if I may add, just, just to clarify, or answer other parts of that question, Daniel Via, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. Just to answer a couple other things in that question. So this, this CUP went through our typical CUP process, like we do with other, with every other conditional use permit application. They went through a staff review process. Every city department had a chance to review it beyond that. Once we established what staff could recommend to the board for approval, at that point in time, we then put together a staff report, put together this presentation that you saw tonight. So what was presented to you is typical of every conditional use permit application.
Thank you for that explanation. Do you guys have any further comments regarding this?
Chair, just one more thing. I think in the public comments received, there was a question regarding the SEQA. In the comments, I just wanted to make sure, as Sarah in the presentation noted, we stand behind the categorical exemption for the project as an existing facility. We don't anticipate that there'll be any significant impacts as a result of this operation and as to the point that Daniel and Sarah have made, that the use is, though listed, not listed on the land use table, the Planning Commission had previously identified it when it came through in the C3 zone as a conditionally permitted use, so that's how they're able to process their application. I think there was a question regarding costs and who shoulders that burden. The applicant has actually paid for the level of effort that we've given, and I'm proud to say that the planners, both in this example and prior, have maintained the same level of professionalism and work product that you see before you. But ultimately, if you pay for the conditional use permit, you hopefully get the same level of service regardless of the applicant.
Thank you for those comments. Does the applicant have any further comments they would like to make? The applicant is saying no. Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Monaco, I see you lighting up your phone there.
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Applicant, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a broad question. I noticed that the hours of operation from opening to the close of programs is 3:00. What is the property going to be used for for the five hours between 3:00 and 8:00?
It's going to be closed. There's nothing going to be used. Just mainly, yes, no, no use.
Right now, it's more of you want the option, but it's not, you don't expect to be using the property during that.
We're not, we're not going to use. Main operation is going to be just adult daycare center. The rest of them is not.
Commissioner Monaco, if I, if I may, just to maybe clarify a little bit. So there's a period of time between when the last participant were to leave the facility and then 8:00 when administrative staff and everybody leaves. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I anticipate during that period, there's administrative functions, cleaning, maintaining the facility?
Oh.
Is that what would occur during that period?
That's what's going to...
Okay.
Yeah, that's going to, yes, I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I now declare the public comment period closed. What is the board's pleasure? Mr. Monaco.
I see no real issue right now. The issue that I had was what the property is going to be used for after the programs. It's been answered. That's about it.
Okay. Ms. Wick.
I'll second that motion. You didn't make the motion. Okay, jumping ahead.
It's just, it's a good use of the space, especially in the part of town that it's in. There's already a lot of business activities and it's not close to any significant residential portions of the city that would be heavily impacted by this. So, thank you, Sarah, for your presentation, and I'm in support of this use.
Go ahead, Ms. Wick.
I would just add on to that, that it's, I definitely support it as well. I think that it's underutilized. We have an aging senior population within our city, and it's also very close to a lot of the Burbank senior housing up on Grismar and stuff like that. And so I think it's a very great project and it'll be wonderful for our city.
And I'll just jump in and say, with my tenure on this board, this is probably the third adult daycare center that we have approved, and there hasn't really, that I know of, has been any issues. I have actually visited one of them, and I just thought it was great that the seniors were getting out, being able to move, and whether they're playing cards or backgammon, they're, mentally, their, their brains are functioning, and it's a good use of, of our resources in the city to, to create this environment for them. So, I'm all for it if somebody wants to make the appropriate motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank approving project number 23-0003001, a conditional use permit for an adult daycare facility located at 607 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, APN 2453-030-023, based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is there any more discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed and abstaining. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two. Now is the time and place for the public hearing on project number 22-3897, a Zone Text Amendment to Establish Regulations and Development Standards for Firearms and Ammunition Retailers. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
Have any planning board members had any communications, including written, oral, with any person about this project?
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have any, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications?
There are written communications that have been provided to the commission before the meeting.
And will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Rosati and members of the Planning Commission. May I please have the presentation? My name's Xavier Thomas, Associate Planner for the Community Development Department. Tonight, staff along with the consulting group DUDEC will be providing an overview of the proposed draft regulations and development standards for firearm and ammunition retailers. Let's start with a brief background. At the City Council meeting of July 26th, 2022, City Council approved an urgency ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of new or replacement retail businesses selling firearms or ammunition. The urgency ordinance and its, and its subsequent extensions on August 23rd, 2022, and July 18th, 2023, have allowed city staff time to evaluate and develop a comprehensive regulatory framework for firearm and ammunition retailers that include updates to both the business license requirements and the zoning regulations. The urgency ordinance is set to expire on July 26th, 2024. At that July 26th City Council meeting, staff was directed to evaluate potential zoning and land use regulations for firearm and ammunition retailers and add a discretionary review process for these uses going forward. The city does not have explicit land use or zoning regulations for firearm and ammunition retailers. These uses are categorized similar to general retail stores and are approved by right wherever retail stores/retail sales are allowed. Due to this land use designation and by right approval, firearm retailers have concentrated along the city's major commercial corridors, such as Magnolia Boulevard and Burbank Boulevard. This concentration has led to concerns expressed by the community about compatibility with other uses, along with the commercial corridor, and their proximity to residential neighborhoods and sensitive uses. Planning staff formed a technical working group that consists of the consulting group DUDEC and members of the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, Police Department, and the Building and Safety Division of CDD. In order to produce the draft objective standards, the technical working group evaluated the best practices of local jurisdictions in the surrounding area, took in feedback from the existing firearm retail stakeholders and members of the Burbank community. The group has worked closely with the City Attorney's Office to ensure that all the proposed draft standards are consistent with federal and state laws. With the help of DUDEC, staff has created objective development standards for the firearm and ammunition retail uses going forward. We will be presenting the items covered in the draft standards, which were also presented to City Council during a study session in December of last year. The first standards include creating firearm and ammunition retailer as a use and adding it to the Burbank Municipal Code Use Table. BMC Section 10-1-502 would be amended to add this use and would make it conditionally approved through a conditional use permit in the following zones: C3 (commercial general business zone), M2 (general industrial zone), BCC2 (Burbank Center Commercial General Business Zone), and BCCM (Burbank Center Commercial Manufacturing Zone). These zones were identified for the allowance of this use, subject to a CUP, based on the analysis conducted when distance separations were applied. This analysis will be discussed shortly. I will now go through and summarize additional objective zoning code amendments that are being proposed, starting with BMC Section 10-1-1119A, which establishes the purpose of this Zone Text Amendment. Section B defines the key terms, and Section C establishes the need for firearm and ammunition retailers to obtain certain permits to operate in the city. Section D would establish that firearm and ammunition retail activity would be prohibited on city property. Section E would establish that existing firearm and ammunition retailers would have 180 days to meet in compliance with any new development standards that were adopted by City Council. Section F would establish that new firearm and ammunition retailers would need to maintain a minimum distance separation requirement from sensitive uses in other firearm and ammunition retailers. The consulting group DUDEC will shortly provide a deeper analysis of these distance separation requirements. Section G would establish video surveillance system requirements for existing and new firearm and ammunition retailers. This standard is compatible, excuse me, this... firearm and ammunition retailers. This standard is compatible, excuse me, this standard is, yes, the standard is compatible with state law and the firearm and ammunition business license ordinance that was adopted by city council in June of two thousand and twenty-three. Section H would establish secure storage of firearms for existing and new firearm ammunition retailers. Section I would require physical barriers for existing and new firearm and ammunition retailers. And last, Section J would require perimeter lighting for new and existing retailers. With that said, I will now turn it over to DUDEC who will review the analysis that was conducted for Section F, the distance separation requirement.
Thank you, Xavier. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Catherine Tangsize. I'm a planner with DUDEC. We're the consultant helping the city with this effort. I'm going to provide you with a bit more context on Section F, location. As Xavier mentioned, this section will only apply to new firearm and ammunition retailers, meaning that retailers that exist today in the city will not be required to comply. This section will require any new firearm retailer to maintain a certain separation, distance, or buffer from both residential zones and sensitive uses. In this case, residential zones are defined as properties zoned as R-one, R-two, R-three, R-four, and the similar zones in the media district. Sensitive uses are defined as schools, public libraries, religious institutions, and public parks and open space. More elaborate definitions for these terms are in the draft ordinance, but I'll speak to them right here, real quick. Schools include both public and private schools, as defined by the California Department of Education, such as primary and secondary schools, colleges, and universities. Public libraries means a library operated by a public jurisdiction defined by the state of California. In this case, for the city of Burbank, that would include city of Burbank public libraries, as well as county of Los Angeles public libraries. Religious institutions means an institution owned or operated by a religious denomination or organization as defined by the state of California. And public parks and open space means a dedicated park or open space maintained by a public jurisdiction like the county of Los Angeles, the city of Burbank, or the state of California. With these separation requirements in place, new firearm and ammunition retailers will be essentially limited to a select number of parcels throughout the city. To determine these parcels, our team considered and analyzed three different options, with staff ultimately deciding on one, but let me share with you right now. These are the three options, which vary based on separation distances. On the left, on one end of the spectrum, option one, we're looking at a smaller separation distance, which results in more areas of the city where new firearm retailers can be allowed. On the right-hand side, option three, on the other end of the spectrum, we're considering a larger separation distance, which results in less areas of the city where new firearm retailers can be allowed. For all options, we use the same process, but the separation distance varies. Let me show you what that looks like in option one. So to determine where new retailers may go, we used basically a process that relied on the elimination or removal of parcels based on certain criteria. First, we started off with all citywide parcels. Then, we removed parcels that were within a certain distance of sensitive uses. So again, schools, public libraries, religious institutions, and public parks and open space. For option one, we used five hundred feet. From that set of parcels, we then removed more parcels that were within a certain distance of residential zones. For option one, again, we used five hundred feet. So this results for option one with the remaining about eighty-nine blocks from which new firearm retail uses would be allowed to operate. You'll see clusters up north by the airport in the Golden State District area and along the five freeway near the Burbank Town Center. For reference, we're also showing where all existing firearm and ammunition retailers are currently in the city. Those are shown as red dots on the map. And you'll notice that they all fall outside of these areas, meaning that they would not be able to comply with this requirement. This will not require them to move their business or close their business. Instead, it just means that existing firearm retailers, if they comply with all other regulations, they will become legally non-conforming. Option two, we applied the same process, but in option two, we use a thousand feet, a thousand feet from sensitive uses and five hundred feet from residential uses. This results in forty-six blocks in more or less the same areas. And again, we're showing the existing retailers as red dots on the map, and you can see that they all, again, fall outside of these areas. Option three, same process, but here we use a thousand feet from sensitive uses and a thousand feet from residential uses. And for option three, this results in thirty blocks. And again, all existing retailers are shown on the map as red dots and they fall outside of these areas. Per city council request, we also considered an additional separation requirement. In addition to requiring new retailers to be a certain number of feet away from both sensitive uses and residential zones, new retailers will also be required to be a certain number of feet away from each other. Per city council request, this distance will be five hundred feet. Excuse me. And this map shows a hypothetical scenario where if one new retailer were to open, that's shown as the red outline of a blue parcel. So if one new retailer were to open, then a separation distance of about five hundred feet means that no other retailer, firearm and ammunition retailer, can open up within a block or so of it. This would help prevent clustering of retailers within the same location, which is a condition that is seen in some areas of the city today. Here's another hypothetical scenario, this time looking at the potential parcels along the five freeway near the Burbank Town Center. Again, hypothetical, where if one new retailer were to open, then a separation distance of about five hundred feet means that no other retailer can also open within a block or so of it. Just to clarify, these are hypothetical situations, either not actual locations for new firearm retailers, but it's just here to show you how, if one were to open in a certain location, how it would limit other retailers from opening up nearby. So after careful consideration and deliberation, both internally with city staff and with other city departments, as well as discussions with stakeholders in the community, staff is recommending that we proceed with option one, which would require that new retailers be at least five hundred feet from both sensitive uses and residential uses, in addition to five hundred feet away from each other, per the request of city council. For the commission's reference, this recommendation is consistent with standard planning practice where local jurisdictions utilize zoning to regulate where certain land uses can occur. In this case, the recommendation is based on a methodology, as you saw, that is rational, reasonable, and balances the need to realistically accommodate new retailers while providing a sense of separation to the public, per city council request. In addition, this recommendation is comparable to what many other jurisdictions in both the region and the state are requiring for the same person, purpose. With that, I'll hand it back to Xavier.
With that being said, here's a reminder of what option one is, five hundred feet from residential uses and five hundred feet from defined sensitive uses. The remaining blocks are in their respective zones, discussed earlier in the presentation, are represented in the proposed amendments to the zoning use table, minus BCC-one. BCC-one has been excluded from the amended use table because staff could not make the findings required to allow firearm and ammunition retail uses in the Burbank Center Commercial Retail Professional Zone, where the intended purpose is geared towards a downtown village concept. This exclusion would result in eighty-one of the two thousand and ninety-eight blocks that would be made available for new firearm and ammunition retailers, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed zone text amendment requires that findings be made to ensure compatibility with the objectives, policies, goals, and land uses and programs of the zoning code and the Burbank two thousand and thirty-five general plan. Staff reviewed the proposed objective standards and found them consistent with the Burbank two thousand and thirty-five general plan, goals, and policies. Staff has reached out and held meetings with the existing firearm retailers in the city to discuss the proposed draft standards. Staff also participated in a study session with city council on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, to gain their feedback and input on the draft standards. Staff followed that up with a community meeting on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to garner the feedback of the public prior to this public hearing. Staff will be holding an additional stakeholder meeting to discuss the land use standards on April twenty-fifth, prior to the city council public hearing. Pursuant to the California Government Code section listed above, the adoption of an ordinance to regulate firearm and ammunition retailers is not a project subject to the requirements of SEQA and thus is exempted from SEQA. Here's the schedule for the remaining items to complete the zone text amendment. As mentioned, staff will be holding a third stakeholder meeting that is open to the public on Thursday, April twenty-fifth. The first reading is scheduled to go before city council on May twenty-first, and a second reading scheduled for June fourth. As a reminder, the urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on new firearm and ammunition retailers is set to expire on July twenty-sixth. In conclusion, based on the direction provided by city council, staff has prepared and proposed the ordinance to establish new land use and zoning regulations for firearm and ammunition retail uses. The ordinance aims to address the concerns expressed by the community related to the concentration and location of firearm retailers, while acting in accordance with the California Constitution to make and enforce all local, police, and other regulations not in conflict with general laws. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending Title Ten, Chapter One of the Burbank Municipal Code, establishing regulations and development standards for firearm and ammunition retail uses. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We will now open the meeting up to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. For members of the public who wish to comment by telephone, please call eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all person, in-person comments have been received. If you're calling in by telephone, please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. Please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer when making your comment and take your phone off speaker. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Is it Damian?
Yes.
Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Damian Garrow. If you approve the zoning proposal, you'll be using zoning as a means to eliminate the gun stores from the city of Burbank. When a gun store loses its lease, it will most likely close. The city council has stated that it is their intention to close gun stores in the city of Burbank through a slow attrition. The structures in the area that the gun stores will be relegated to in the zoning proposal are all large ten thousand, hundred thousand square foot warehouses and industrial buildings. The area that is proposed, that is proposed for zoning will force gun stores to move to its, to not an appropriate area for small businesses. They're not retail areas. And the stores will not be able to afford to rent these huge warehouses, so they will go out of business over time. That the buildings in these locations are too big, too expensive, and they're not in retail districts. I urge the Burbank Planning Commission not to use zoning as a political remedy. The zoning commission should remain unbiased. It's not meant to enforce a political agenda. The city of Burbank is opening itself to litigation from multiple organizations, such as the Firearms Policy Coalition, California Rifle Pistol Association, Gun Owners of America, National Sports Shooting Foundation. These lawsuits are lengthy, multi-year lawsuits and are costly. The lawsuits work their way through multiple courts and often be appealed to, to the Ninth Circuit. Is this what the city of Burbank should be spending its limited tax revenue and human resources on? Do not let the city council, which has multiple members who are aspiring to higher office, use the city Burbank Planning Commission as a stepping stone to sway you into rubber-stamping their feel-good agenda. The zoning commission should not be a political tool of the Burbank City Council. I urge you to vote no on this zoning proposal. Thank you for listening, Damian.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Besson.
Good evening, Chair Razadi and commission members. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank staff for their diligence and dedication to this project. There's a difference between questioning staff about their work versus being so hostile about the work being done that the hostility becomes personal and abusive. I appreciate how staff has remained professional and focused despite receiving this abuse. The zoning changes presented to you tonight are legal, court-tested, and not unique. You will hear numerous straw man arguments from its opponents. Tonight, I will address a few of them. There are those who say this is hurting small business owners and will restrict the tax revenue received by the city. If this argument is being made in good faith, I expect to see these same people appear before city council, also advocating for pot dispensaries in Burbank. You've heard threat of lawsuits. There are no actual legal grounds for this threat, and if they bring a frivolous suit, I hope the city will act to collect their legal costs from them when the city quickly prevails. As we know, zoning changes are allowed and should be made as time passes, based on the needs of the community. For example, just as this would eliminate the automatic grandfathering of gun stores in the same location, the city decided it is not in the community's best interest to grandfather permits for drive-throughs for new developments. That decision and change was made in response to residents' concerns, just as we see in this situation. In February of this year, USA Today published a database maintained by the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. This database tracks guns used in crimes that were sold by gun stores, and the data was from two thousand and twenty-three. Listed in this database as having sold guns used in crimes were four Burbank gun stores, and I won't name them publicly. The criteria for being included on the list was relatively simple. At least twenty-five guns traced to a crime over a year that were purchased in the last three years. Those who insist that more gun stores mean greater public safety want you, want you to ignore these facts. If these zoning changes actually resulted in an increase of crime, I would expect the true experts on public safety, the Burbank Police Department, would be here speaking out, but Chief Albanese and his police force have been only supportive of the community's concerns and staff's efforts. On behalf of the hundreds of residents who've made their concerns clear about the number of gun stores in Burbank, who have been insulted and called hysterical and ignorant and worse, simply because the change they want involves guns, I ask you to support and approve this effort to bring this change to Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmore?
Good evening, members of the Burbank Planning Commission. My name is Deborah Levitt-Gilmore. I'm a parent and I work for the Burbank Unified School District. I'm here to speak about the number of gun shops in our town. I always knew that there were a lot, but it wasn't until the day I took a walk from John Burroughs High School, where I work, to GMLA Subs on the corner of Victory and Magnolia, approximately a half-mile walk in each direction, where I realized just how horrific the gun store issue is. In that walk of, as I said, about half a mile, I passed a total of four gun shops, all within very, very close proximity of each other, and all within walking distance of the high school and at least two elementary schools. I knew this problem existed, but seeing it in front of me in such a glaring way had me enraged. Back in two thousand and eighteen, just after the tragic events at Marjory Stoneman Douglas School in Florida, my own daughter led the very well-attended March for Our Lives down Chandler Boulevard in protest of the ease of obtaining guns. There were over four thousand Burbankians there who were all distressed and fed up with the proliferation of gun shops in our town and the horror of all these school shootings. And yet, it seems that we have had even more gun stores pop up since that time. I don't have the facts or statistics. I just know that half a mile from one of our two big neighborhood high schools are four gun stores. And further down the street, west of Hollywood Way and just a couple of blocks from Roosevelt Elementary, is the big, giant, brightly-colored gun store. Maybe it's called Gun World. I don't know the names of these stores. I only see guns advertised block after block after block. These distances are absolutely insane. As stated and well-known, these stores are so close to several elementary schools, high schools, and obviously residential areas. The question has always been, why do we have so many gun stores in such a small, concentrated area? Why, here in Burbank? Why is this something we are known for? Burbank won't allow us to open up tattoo shops, or for that matter, marijuana dispensaries, neither of which business hurts humanity the way that guns do, but there's a free-for-all on gun shops availability- but there's a free-for-all on gun shops availability here in our city. Frankly, I'd much rather Burbank be known for being a tattoo- and marijuana-friendly city than a gun-friendly city. Maybe that's just me, though I doubt it. It is time to not allow any more gun stores to open in our town and to find a way to get rid of the ones that are already here. I thought we were here to talk about no more gun shops in Burbank. This blueprint with five-hundred-foot distance from sensitive-use areas has me believing this proliferation of gun shops is not gearing up to end just to readjust locations. I urge you to not vote on this proposal. This is so disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, first, Ms. Judith, last name is, is it Arzon?
Anna Z. Anna Z.
Anna Z. Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to ask a question before I start. Why is the option one, the one we're going for, as opposed to option three?
I can just ask you to deliver your message, and then we'll have staff respond.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. I live around the corner from Gun World XXL, and it was a complete shock and surprise when they entered that facility. When the little target went into its facility, there were months and years and flyers and discussion about whether or not a target was allowed to be in that position, in that system. The gun store just popped up overnight. There has to be more legislation about that. Second of all, the, according to the state federal, it's a thousand feet from a sensitive-use area. There are three schools and a church less than a thousand feet from Gun World, and I don't see how that benefits us. Thirdly, I thought we were here to talk about putting a moratorium on gun shops. All we've seen from this proposition is places where more gun shops, gun shops will be allowed to enter, and I absolutely disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. My last card is Matt K.
Good evening, once again. I absolutely want to point out, Chief Albanese is actually represented here by the Police Department's report that did a survey of similar businesses to the gun stores and found that within a five-hundred-foot ra, those locations and within a five-hundred-foot radius were actually safer than the average retail is in regards to calls for service. So, so the Police Department has chimed in on this, and they have said that the, that these retail uses are actually safer than the average 7-Eleven in the city. Maybe 7-Eleven is not a great example, but you get what I'm saying. If you look at the map where it says that places could be someday, it's very interesting that we've had, we've held the, the inner boundaries of Burbank in such high regard, where right, right across those lines in the city of Los Angeles, there are residences and, and schools and churches. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna take this phony baloney claim about we're doing this for safety, we're, we're holding what's on the other side of that border in absolutely no regard. But again, I don't encourage you to, because again, I believe it's a phony baloney requirement. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Do, anyone on the phone? Thank you.
We have two speak, two callers, I'm sorry.
Okay. Put them through.
Caller is live.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Brooke, and I am a homeowner in Burbank for twenty-four years, have two kids in the community, and a business. To address really quick some of the speakers, the retail sites being safer than others, the gun retail site being safer than others, is just ludicrous, because it's a gun store, of course. It's, that's not the point. The point is the guns, which I think we're losing sight of. It's the guns. The guns are the number-one killer of kids. Period. It's a fact. Since 2021, the number-one killer of children. The fact that Burbank is the second-largest per capita gun retailer in the United States is a horrible, horrible moniker for this city that I love. This is the, this is the perception that we're putting out to the world. This is a family city. This is not the second-per-capita gun retailer in the nation. That's not what we want to be. I understand that this movement, this zoning, is just a step, hopefully in a greater movement to reduce the number of gun shops, because it is simply ridiculous. This started long ago, when it got out of hand. I understand that, and we cannot unring a bell, but we can certainly begin to dismantle the tower that it was hung upon. I urge you to increase, why we chose option one instead of three is, again, another ludicrous proposition. It should just be, it should have never been a discussion. It's within reach of a school, of a church, of a park. How many, how many desks do we need? The ATF has released a report that said fifty-four percent of gun crime were from legal purchases, that more than one million guns stolen from private citizens between 2017 and 21, 2021 were used in crime. Seventy percent of the crime guns were pistols, all sold on our streets, within, within not even a block of each other. This is ludicrous, and this is the, this is the image that we are putting out to the world for our city. It shouldn't be a discussion. If we can mandate CBD shops and tattoo shops, we can certainly start to mandate gun shops. It's not a violation of the Second Amendment. There is plenty availability. If lawsuits are brought, like Lynda Besson mentioned, they can be countered because they will be frivolous. This needs to be done. We need to start with zoning, fine. Then let's start with zoning. But we need to continue to get rid of the gun stores that are all over our city streets. My kids walked down the block when the pandemic hit, and I had to explain to them why there were lines around the gun shops. No family should have to do that. No family should have to explain to their kids that people are arming themselves against a virus. It's ridiculous. I would just love to have this family city be an actual family city.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please. Did we lose the caller?
Caller is live.
Good evening. Good evening.
This is Brooke Stell.
Caller is live.
Good evening. You're on with the planning board.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Thank you for taking my call this evening. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there in person, mostly just to be at work. As you can hear from other members speaking today, a lot of emotions flowing regarding this type of an issue, and of course, there's always going to be some. I'm gonna just kind of caution the planning commission here just to be careful about the emotions that are coming off of these ones, because it seems to be not rooted, in fact, as a matter of fact. It was already mentioned that firearms are somehow the number-one killer of children. Well, that's also off of a CDC report that was been proven false by the CDC's own admission, okay? Where they purposely mis, manipulate the data in order to persuade more emotions out of people. So again, I would caution that this commission just not, not fall for these types of plans or these tricks that are being presented by emotionally-charged individuals. And as regards to how crime is related to these gun stores, by, by a lot of the city's own admission, a good example is on Exhibit B, page eight of one of the proposed documents here, is that there is no direct correlation between the number of, of stores versus the amount of firearms recovered in a crime there. Yes, Burbank does have its amount of gun stores, but that is, as mentioned several times throughout this whole process, by right. All the businesses currently in gun stores are acting in good faith. They have done nothing wrong. And we are expecting that the city would do the same, to act in good faith to its citizens. I'm a longtime resident of Burbank myself. I've, I've lived here nearly my whole life, and I also work in Burbank, too. I am, I am glad to be a member of this city. And, and by no way do I ever believe that the volume of firearms has been a reflection of what Burbank is. Not by any means. If anything, places like Tallyrand are more of a staple of Burbank than any one gun store or all of them collectively. If anything, we're more known for our better airport than we are for our gun stores. These are, these are arguments being made out of emotion and not by a sound, reasonable individual. And that's what we really need to listen to, sound, reasonable information, facts, and data. I thank you for taking my call this evening.
No more callers.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments? It's off.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. The first comment that I would like to address from the first public comment speaker was in regards to the language of firearm retailers going away through attrition. City Council actually obtained that language exclusively from our non-conforming section. That's language that is identified in our non-conforming section in the BMC. The intent is any non-conforming use in the city, regardless of what that use is. If it is non-conforming, the hope is that over attrition, that use would no longer actually be in the city. That's just language that's straight from our code itself. The second issue that, or second item I'd like to address is, staff did a comprehensive evaluation of all firearm-related regulations across pretty much the state, one of which was looking into the potential for caps or the actual issuance of future firearm retail licenses going forward. So saying, or indicating that this is the given number that we will have firearm retailers, there will be no more after this. Staff, working with the City Attorney's Office, attempted to see whether or not this would open us up to any legal jeopardy. We tried seeing whether or not any other cities have actually done such a thing, and it has not been done. And we tried to evaluate all regulations through the lens of whether or not things would be feasible and are possible and are not open us up to any legal jeopardy. So that's why the idea of caps was completely removed from this actual ordinance, including in that was the, I'll answer the question as to why we arrived at option number one, keeping in that same vein. Originally, staff actually evaluated option two as what we were going to be recommending. Then staff went through the City Council's study session in December, and then City Council introduced the anti clustering provisions of looking into whether or not we can evaluate what would the potential be of five-hundred feet from existing retailers from each other. Staff did the analysis, as was presented by DUDAC, and we decided the best approach, again, trying to find what is the most feasible and appropriate approach to not open up to legal jeopardy, was to take a combination of both option one and of the anti clustering measure. So that is what we chosen. Another thing that had to be evaluated was we still, again, keeping in mind that we couldn't institute caps, was also keeping in mind that we still had to make certain parcels available in the city, again, working with City Attorney's Office. So we couldn't just simply say, you are completely eliminated. That would be the equivalency of the caps. So in order to find the best middle-ground approach, we took option one with the anti clustering and still made certain parcels and portions of the city available for potential future firearm retailers to go, again, subject to a conditional use permit. The last thing that I'll identify is the sensitive uses across the border into Los Angeles or across the border outside of Burbank. Staff only evaluated sensitive uses, as identified in the staff report, based on what is inside the city of Burbank. That's the city we kind of only look at. But during the conditional use permit, again, assuming that future firearm retailers would be going there and they would be close to that border, we would not only be looking at the sensitive uses within those buffer areas, we would also be looking at and evaluating if there are any sensitive uses that are across within other jurisdictions or other cities and taking that into consideration, whether or not the findings could be made to approve a new future firearm retailer. That, I believe, is all.
Okay.
Chair, if I may just add to that. Dan will be a principal planner with the Community Development Department. I just want to just also add one additional point. One thing to understand is that the city of Burbank can regulate land use since, throughout the city. We do that all the time. We, we've identified that in certain zones, we are not going to allow manufacturing uses. In, in other zones, we are going to allow drive-throughs through a conditional use permit. In some, we won't. So we, we've done that throughout the years, many times, when we come before the board, before the City Council, and identified requirements for separation of land uses, prohibition, allowance of land uses. This is similar to that. So just wanted to throw that out there. We've identified, as mentioned by DUDAC, a methodology for how we got to where we, to, to our recommendation. And, and it is because of the, what, the findings in the presentation and in the staff report that we've identified that this is something that we feel comfortable with, not only presenting before the commission tonight, but also eventually before the City Council.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff? Monica.
I do. Hi. Just a couple of questions to put things into context for me, because I'm relatively new to this concept. Right now, is there an open carry law in Burbank?
Are you referring to just simply whether or not there's open carry rules and regulations in the zoning code? Or just?
You cannot, you cannot, you cannot open carry in Burbank.
Yeah, the answer is no.
You cannot open carry in Burbank.
Okay, that was my question. Are there currently any restrictions, conditions, and enforcement review of the actual business operations regarding especially the security, the, the storage of such weapons, ammo, et cetera? In other words, is the actual business operations regulated?
Yes. The firearms is actually one of the most heavily regulated in, like, businesses in the state of California. So not only are they regulated by the state and federal government, recently, they also, City Council adopted a business license ordinance that also instituted local inspections by our police department that also would look at the secure storage of firearms within existing facilities in the city.
And as I said, this is educational in context for me. Are there current restrictions, conditions, and enforcement review of gun ranges? I know there's a gun range over by where the shelter is, animal shelter?
The animal shelter, yes. Same thing. They all would fall within the same bounds of that business license ordinance that was adopted by City Council.
Excuse me, and do they fall under the same? Are, are they going to fall under the same zoning restrictions we're discussing here tonight as it is with the?
Yes, they would.
Okay. And the comments from Burbank Police Department, have they been read into any records at all? Have that, has that been, have we heard from a representative from BPD?
Well, we have been working with BPD the entire time throughout, I mean, we have bi-weekly meetings in regards to this actual effort. So we have worked exclusively with Burbank Police Department along this entire effort. And there, again, was mentioned, there was a report that was presented to City Council July twenty-sixth in regards to this effort, and then, again, working with us exclusively along the way.
Chair, for me, I think, to make a distinction, what's before you tonight is the zoning code regulations. So the subject matter expertise on the zoning regulations are the staff here from a, but I just wanted to make the distinction. Police Department, not only are they responsible for facilitating business license compliance as part of their review and going out to the different locations, but to the point that Mr. Villa noted, in this particular issue, there is information in the record as far as analysis that was done in collaboration with the Police Department regarding facts as far as, you know, crime and the different uses and the different facilities. But I cannot emphasize enough the fact that the focus here is the city's ability to use its police powers to regulate land uses within the commercial corridors. And what we've heard from the public, the people that are concerned with the overconcentration in certain commercial corridors. in certain commercial corridors, and from the council, is that they want to maintain a certain level of community character and a certain mix of uses in those areas. So that's kind of where the code is focused on and left that issue as far as correlations between gun stores and, and crime or incidences of using of weapons in, in crime activities, kind of on a separate level of analysis. But for our focus, to the points that have been brought up by some of the members of the public, is the city has invoked its police powers to also limit other things, like in the case of drive-through establishments, precluding cannabis businesses in the city and the like. So it's well within the purview both of the public and the, and the commission to use its ability to objectively review projects and determine whether you want to have a similar set of criteria and limits on this type of a use in that location. I just wanted to bring that, because I think one of the comments we heard from the public was to make a clear distinction between the responsibilities of the commission versus any policy decisions that the council would make. So what's before you tonight is what we consider to be a very thought-out zone text amendment with public input. And you, as the body, the land use decision body that makes recommendations to the commission, the focus here is to say, can we meet the findings of the zone text amendment? And, and/or are there any tweaks that need to be made to the current regulations before there, before you make any recommendation to council for their consideration? Saying all that, the commission could go beyond the bounds of the land use requirements and make a policy decision that goes above and beyond any purview you would have. But I just wanted to make that distinction because the commission has been really good and historically shown that they can make a distinction between the politics and the land use decision components. I just wanted to make sure, you're, you're on solid ground...
Okay.
...where you're approaching it. And, and like I said, it's not anything that is an anomaly of sorts because we have made other limitations on certain uses along the commercial corridor.
Well, I, I fully understand that it's the business of this commission to look at the zoning requirements, to look at, you know, land use, planning, et cetera. I'm asking questions in context so that I can put the whole package together. Again, if you could just briefly say, why did you choose option one versus option three?
So again, we arrived at just kind of putting together all the regulations and rules through a, through a lens of what is the most feasible, what is the most possible, and what could potentially not open us, open us up to legal ramifications or legal jeopardy. So by doing so, the approach was, let's find what is the middle ground approach. And so the middle ground approach was originally taking option two, which was the 500 feet and then 1,000 feet. And that's where we're going to arrive at. At city council meeting, they decided to introduce the idea of an anti clustering measure, which was 500 feet from existing retail establishments. So with that being said, again, as was presented, once you introduce, once you introduce something like that, once a new firearm retailer, again, assuming that whatever option, if option one is chosen, that then further limits the amount of parcels that now future firearm retailers can go if one is then approved. Because then now a new 500-foot buffer is then added from that actual use. It's like adding a new use that a 500-foot buffer would then be added. So we then said, fine, let's, if we add in another buffer at that point, the new middle ground, again, what is the most feasible, possible, that potentially could not open us up to legal jeopardy, would be taking option one and then taking the 500-foot cluster, anticluster, which would then be 500 feet from sensitive uses, residential zones, and also existing firearm retailers. And that's how I arrived at that conclusion.
So, for instance, if I object to option one, but not to option three, I would have to vote no on this, correct?
You, I believe, can propose with an amendment to your recommendation to city council that you would actually like to see option three be what is recommended to city council as opposed to what staff is recommending, which is option one. That is within your purview.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for staff? Ms. Wick.
Switching gears, I have a couple of questions about current legal nonconforming firearm stores. In terms of current stores, and I'm, I'm thinking in terms of the drive-through ordinance, I believe, at least when it was at Planning Commission, the way that it was decided there would be a 90-day window where if a drive-through closed, a new drive-through could open, is that the same with a firearm store? Or does it not transfer, is it business per business, not property to property?
So how we instituted the legal nonconforming section for here is, we actually gave, in drive-throughs, gave them a 90-day window. In this instance, there would be no 90-day window. So from the second that it was adopted by city council, all assuming whatever option is actually chosen for separation requirements, none of the existing firearm retailers would be legally allowed to move into or any of those different locations. So they would all be designated as legal nonconforming uses at that point. And so going forward, they would have 180 days to be in compliance with any of the other development standards, which the other development standards would include lighting, barriers, so on and so forth. But their legal nonconforming designation would still remain at that point.
If I may, Chair, real quick. Xavier, can you clarify, though, I think the question is, within the 90-day window, they would still fall, in other words, would they still comply with the nonconforming provisions of the code?
If I may, Brad.
Sure.
Daniel Villa, community development principal planner, just to answer your question. So in the, in the regulations that you're considering tonight for recommending to the city council, there's actually language in there that states that, that that 90-day provision would not apply to firearm retailers. What I mean by that is, the moment that it, that the business closes, immediately, it would no longer be able to reopen. What that means is that they would not have that 90-day gap like drive-throughs and other uses.
Got it. And then in terms of current businesses that have legal nonconforming status or will have legal non, do you know which percent of businesses of the current firearms are currently compliant and which ones would need to...
We, based on the proposed development standards here, we do not have that information as to who would be in compliance with all the regulations as adopted. We do not have that information.
No problem. Thank you.
But if I may add, sorry about that. Just to further answer that, one thing to note is that the 14, there's 14 establishments with, with a license to sell firearms, however, only nine of them actually sell firearms. Those nine establishments, and also all 14 of them with the license, they're actually outside of the areas that would allow a new firearm retailer. So because of that, if this is eventually recommended to the city council for adoption and is adopted, any version of the options would actually result in all 14 businesses being legal nonconforming, meaning that if they were to ever close business, they would not be able to reopen immediately.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? Just more detail on this. If I own a firearm store and I sell my business, I don't close it, I sell it and transfer it to somebody else, can it still maintain that business?
So staff has actually worked with ATF to understand the mechanisms of federal firearms licenses. And so the simple answer is yes, a federal firearms license can be transferred. However, there is a point in which whenever that actual license is revoked, surrendered, or any of that sort, then the nonconformity or that license then goes away and that business then ceases to have their nonconform, or their conforming status would then be revoked.
So you could, you could transfer that license and still maintain business without closure?
Correct. According to ATF, yes, that is correct.
Um, do you have any questions?
I mean, as far as these legal challenges that keep, keep being brought up, I mean, last time I checked, and I'm not a lawyer, but the Second Amendment gives you a right to own a gun. It doesn't give you right to have a convenient gun store near you. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there was a comment in here from the public that said that this, these laws are 10 years too late. Quite frankly, there might be 20 or 30 years too late. So I think that the CUP is the bare minimum that we can add to the zoning text amendment that would be the mechanism for opening up any new gun stores in Burbank.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the consultant. Actually, a couple of questions. So for the consultant, how accurate is your report? Is there a plus and minus, or is it accurate? 100%?
To which part? Excuse me, to which part are you referring to?
Where you identified where potential gun stores could be without sensitive areas.
So the maps that you saw and the locations of the residential zones, that is based on city-provided data. So the residential zones that you see on the map are, as of at least a couple of months ago, up to date. The sensitive uses, however, those are, those were obtained from County of Los Angeles public databases, and that changes daily.
So it's not constant?
Correct. Yeah.
This could change, we could vote on this tonight, and tomorrow something could pop up and change it.
That is true.
Yeah. And then as far as, do we have any idea the, the gun stores now, who leases and who owns?
We do not have that information, no.
Okay. Mr. Monaco, do you have one more question?
I'm sorry, I just wanted, again, Chairman Rosati's question. So if, with regard to transfer of business ownership, so you can transfer, well, I'll call it a license, you can transfer the license, but let's say you want to go in there and do renovation work. First of all, we would have to, that would have to come before us, I would assume.
No.
No.
That's a tenant proven. If it closes, if they close, they're done.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's, that's fine.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? No applicant, staff. All right, seeing none, I declare the public comment period closed. What is the board's pleasure?
I would like to, I can speak on, I'd like to discuss that. I think that's the quality of life, I think that's what this community stands for. I do not believe that a gun store is, well, backtrack on that. I don't believe a gun store is a destination retail, retail site. I don't think anybody's walking down the street, looks in the window and says, you know, besides the cup of coffee I'm going to get, I'm going to buy a gun. Now, I am not going to get into the political discussion of gun ownership. However, we do have the ability in this city to maintain a certain, I won't say lifestyle, but at the same time, a certain feeling. And I, I'm not happy that the gun stores are here now. I believe that people have the right to own a gun. I don't own one. I've shot a lot of guns. But I think it's this community's right to determine which way the quality of life goes and what we want Burbank to present itself as. So my only issue is, I want the ability to vote for option three. And that's all I can say on that.
Uh, Ms. Wick?
I completely agree with you that option three is, is a very good option. I pers, and this is not getting into my political beliefs about guns, gun ownership. I, I think that your comments, if I may, are treading a very thin line that we need to be careful of here. As like Mr. Ramirez said, we're, we're a land use commission. We're not here for policy. We're not here to discuss gun ownership, the Second Amendment. And really what this comes down to is, we have conditional use permits for many other things in the city. I mean, we've sat through countless...
Daycare?
Daycare. Exactly. Exactly. I was going to say alcohol permits, but daycare. And, I mean, two weeks ago, we sat through a conditional use permit for a pet shop. And so without any discrimination to gun owners, gun ownership, firearm stores, this, this, this makes sense in terms of requiring a business to have, to meet certain requirements. I, I think that city council, they tend to be more political, they can hash out option one, option two, option three. I don't, I'm looking at this strictly as, does this, does the zone text amendment make sense? Can we make a recommendation on that, yes or no?
Okay. Mr. Buck, Chair?
Yeah, I just think that without necessarily focusing on which option that we're going to be moving forward with, I mean, is there an option? So correct me if I'm wrong, if by July 26th, this isn't decided on, then we return to the status quo, which is gun ownership. I think that we should move forward with the zoning text amendment. And I would, I mean, depending on which, is, is, is there an ability to move forward without settling on an option?
No.
Okay. So we have to set an option at this, at this hearing?
Actually, you could say no option and not vote and not, not vote on, period.
It's, good evening, Commissioners Jill Vanderwart, Senior Assistant City Attorney. You're being asked to make a recommendation to the council.
Right.
So an option would be included as part of the zone text amendment, or else it would probably be incomplete.
And Chair, if I may, too, just, just to throw it out there, all three options are in front of you for consideration. So if you decide to, if a majority decides that you want to go with option three, then you have by all means the ability to do so. I just want to make sure that we're aware of the fact that in this particular scenario, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the 1,000-foot distance separation doesn't also layer on the 500-foot buffer from similar firearm uses. So just, so if you're looking at that exhibit, currently with that layout, it would produce 30 blocks out of the 2,089, but doesn't include the additional layer that council requests that we look at and we applied it to the option one, which could reduce the blocks even further. But with that said, that's, I think you still have an option if you want to look at three to, because it's a recommendation. So the council will see all three options. You could look at an option three, and if you feel as a majority you want to move that forward as the commission's recommended option, you can consider that as well.
Okay. So, just, let me make my comments. So, doing this for quite a while, and working with the city attorney's office for a long time, and knowing our council tendencies very well, they would have given us option three if they didn't think we were going to be legally challenged. And I think the reason why, and then, and then we wind up with nothing. So I think they're, they gave us option one as the best case to, to bring this forward without being legally challenged and then wind up with nothing. I, I strongly believe that if our council thinks that option three is viable, they will overturn our decision. I strongly believe that our city attorney's office, who I believe in immensely, has worked on this diligently, and the reason why they gave us option one is because it's the most viable. Mr. Monaco?
Legal challenges have never stopped me from doing anything that I think is right. But I do take Chairman Rosati's comments, um, review, and I have no further, no further comments.
Any other comments from any other board members? If not, if somebody wants to make the appropriate motion.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Burbank Planning Commission to adopt the zoning text amendment for project number 22-0003897, a proposed zone text amendment to establish development standards and regulations for firearm and ammunition retail uses with option one.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Just to be clear, you're adopting a recommendation on the zone text amendment as drafted...
Correct.
...before you.
We have a motion?
And a second, including the comments from Madam City Attorney. And a second, including the comments from Madam City Attorney.
Any more discussion? I'm going to simply say that if members of the audience want to reach out to council, they'll be voting on this. If our council deems it viable to go with option three, they will go with option three. And, and I just want to throw that out there, this is not the final, the city council will be the final say. And again, they have a working relationship with our city attorney's office, and if they think it's viable, then they will vote accordingly. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? And any abstentions? Seeing none. Thank you. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Are there any reports? Uh, no, chairperson. Okay. Oral communications, now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the commission on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to staff. For members of the public that wish to call in, call 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed on the queue until all in-person comments have been received. Please bear with us until we get the first few callers through. Please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your comments. Do we have any?
No speakers or callers.
Speakers. There being none, I declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for approval of minutes from March 25th, 2024. Have we had a chance to review those minutes? And if so, can I get the appropriate motion?
I move to approve the minutes from March 25th, 2024.
I second that.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And, and no abstentions. Thank you. Now is the time for additional agenda items. Do we have any additional agenda items to place on a future agenda item? Nope. Okay. Now is the time for city planner comments.
No comments, thank you.
No comments. Wow. Really want to see that NCA game, don't you?
I'm not my time.
No, thank you, guys.
We now adjourn the meeting to Monday, April 22nd, 2024, 6:00 PM. The meeting will be held in person at the city council chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or view the meeting online, and there will be a call-in feature on that. In person, by leaving, you can also do an e-comment by www.burbankca.gov/ecomments. Thank you all for participating and have a good night.